From one ring of the three ring circus to the next. I said, jumping from one ring of the three ring circus to the next.
Welcome to the May 29th City of Oldsmar CIP Workshop. It is 6:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Our first item on the agenda is our invocation and our pledge allegiance, which will be led by our city attorney, Tom Trass. Please rise.
Dear heaven and father, we come humbly to ask your divine guidance and help in our deliberations this evening. Blessed the members of this council and the citizens that are present, we pray that our work this evening will find favor in your sight. This we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. I'm going to open up the Oldsmar Open Forum. Is there anybody that would like to speak today? Come on up. You've got five minutes. Any subject you want to talk about.
Sean Swager, 601 Spruce Street, Oldsmar. I just wanted to take this opportunity to say that I'm officially a qualified candidate now that the qualified period has ended for the upcoming special election on August 20th. So excited to officially announce that publicly. And I just wanted to share some experiences I've had meeting with the residents of the city over the last month or so. It's really been just reassuring that I'm doing the right thing. And I love hearing the overall sentiment that I've, you know, come to know of our residents. Just, you know, I think Andrew had a word cloud, I think you called it. And the biggest word was community, right? And then that's the vibe, that's the feeling that I got, you know, meeting with families. So, you know, I talked to one, you know, individual and they'd say, hey, have you met so-and-so next door? And I'd go meet with them. So anyway, it was a good experience. And again, just excited to what's to come. And then also just wanted to give a shout out to the city staff and Mr. Chip Potts for the Memorial Day ceremony. That was the first time I've been there in person and I was just blown away, really impressed. So anyway, I just wanted to share that. It was a great experience, so.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the Oldsmar Open Forum. We're going to get started with our capital improvement program budget for the fiscal year 2025 and 2023. And before we get started, I mentioned to Cindy before the meeting that I'm glad the Harbor Palms project is not on it. It's finally over with. So Felicia, take it away.
Yes, that's certainly true, Mayor, but we're still paying for it. So I just wanted to say that. So we're just thrilled to be here tonight to present the capital improvement program for fiscal years 24 to 25 through 2930. It's our honor. I want to thank the staff for, our team for working very hard to get together the document with all the details that you see. So I'm going to introduce, or I'm going to, I'm going to give you a list of all the team members that are here tonight. So we've got Kristen Garcia, city clerk, Tom Chass, city attorney. We've got Cindy Nino, the Director of Administrative Services, Amy Ratliff, accounting administrator, John Dauphine, Senior Management Analyst. We've got Sabrina Nappens, Management Analyst. We've got Daniel Simpson, Director of Public Works, Jana Jan, the Assistant Director of Public Works. We have Chief Schwab, Fire Chief, Tatiana Childress, the Planning and Redevelopment Director, Chip Potts, Parks and Recreation Director, and Susan Hurley, Library Director. And Garrett Zyliss, Finance Administrator. So thank you for that. All right. So also, I think it's really important to tell you all that, you know, this is a work session. So if you have questions, you don't have to wait till the end. Just ask us when we're, when we're, when we're doing our portions. Okay? All right, so here goes. So what is the purpose of a capital improvement program? We call that a CIP for people who are watching on TV. It provides a formal mechanism for decision-making. It connects to long-range planning efforts. It's really our guiding star. It's a financial management tool. I want to pause right here for a moment. So this year, you'll notice some changes. We've been taking steps to improve transparency of the plan over the last couple of years and also how we present financial feasible plans. So what you'll notice that this year is there's a separate part and it's an appendix. And there's a very large list of projects that we've identified in the past that we have no funding sources for right now. So we want to be transparent and those are items that simply don't have funding and we'll pursue grant fundings and as other, if funding comes available, then, then they're in the plan. But right now, we just don't have the funds to support them. So, and it's a reporting document. So what is a capital improvement program now that we talked about the purpose? Well, it's a six-year plan. It identifies all the capital projects to be implemented. It includes the year that the project's going to start or acquire. There's a lot of equipment. The amount expected to be spent each year, the proposed method of financing. So you'll see that by funds. We'll talk about that as we go along. And also by council priority. So what are the advantages? Well, it focuses on community goals and needs and financial capability. It builds public consensus for projects and improves community awareness. It's a transparent document. This, this is what we're planning to build or acquire over the next six years. It avoids wasted resources. It helps us to ensure financial stability and it improves governmental cooperation and communication. So how do we fund these projects? Cindy Nino is going to go in greater detail. This is just a broad overview. So one is tax dollars, right, through state and federal grant programs. Also Penny for Pinellas, shared state revenues, ad valorem taxes, it's property taxes. And then through the community redevelopment tax increment financing revenues. Developer agreements, water sewer and stormwater utility revenue, impact fees, in-depth funding when needed, like harbor pumps. So in general, we save money so that we can pay for these projects, just like you do at home. So how do we save them? Well, in general fund, we have different funds. So we have general fund, we have a public safety impact fund, we have Parkland Dedication Fund, we have a multimodal impact fund, we have a community redevelopment agency fund, we have a capital improvement fund. We also have enterprise funds. So we have Water and Sewer Operating Fund, Water and Sewer Impact Fund, and the Stormwater Utility Fund. And before we get started and what's in the document, as, as the mayor talked about, you know, we're happy that Harbor Palms is completed. But it is really important to talk about what projects aren't in the document that were funded previously that we're working on, right? So those may require additional resources as we, as we proceed in that journey. So I think that that's important. Now, these, you know, aren't in the document. So most of these are, are public works projects and they're major projects. And so the city's invested a lot of time and resources in these. So I'm going to ask Daniel Simpson, Director of Public Works, to come up and talk about it.
Thank you. First, the St. Petersburg Drive Streetscape and Roundabout. This project is to enhance the corridor of St. Petersburg Drive, underground overhead utilities, replace ditches with culverts, replace and widen sidewalks, decrease lane widths in order to reduce speed, and build a roundabout at Bayview. The funding for this project is from the CRA fund, $2 million. From the capital improvement fund, there's $3 million, which are broken into the Penny for Pinellas, state grant, and federal grant. So we're doing this project to reduce speeds of vehicles and to increase safety for all users. The current status is the design and permitting is complete and the project is to be advertised on Friday. And we expect the groundbreaking late summer 2024 and the construction should last about a year. Next is the wastewater master plan. This is, this project will identify 10 years of infrastructure improvements and prioritize these projects and develop a CIP schedule and model and assess the collection system. The reason we're doing this is we have aging infrastructure, more stringent regulations. There's been a greater focus on energy efficiency, sustainability, and resilience. We want to look at increasing the plant capacity and this supports the city council priority. The status is that it's, the scope of work has been negotiated and awarded in March and data collection's underway. Next is the WRF Control Building. This is funded through a $2.15 million state appropriation. And also there's water and sewer reserves program for this project. The total project cost is at $6.55 million, but I should let you know that our certainty on that is very low. The goal of this project is to replace the control building to meet current flood elevation requirements and improve the use of space and harden our building. We're doing this for resilience and modernization. The design and permitting is complete and the project was advertised last Friday. Groundbreaking is expected in early fall of 2024 and the construction will last two and a half years. Next is the culvert at State Street. So the goal of this project is to replace that ditch with a box culvert. The reasons are to reduce erosion, improve water quality, decrease our maintenance burden, and increase the safety and aesthetics. We've negotiated a fee, a scope and fee with the engineer of record and the design work order was approved on May 21st. We have ongoing grant coordination with Florida Department of Environmental Protection and Housing and Urban Development. So there's two grants involved with this project. One is a federal grant that's $1.6 million and a state grant that's $1 million. Our next project is the stormwater master plan. This will update the city's stormwater model, recommend and prioritize projects for the next 10 years, evaluate current funding, recommend grants to fund projects, and improve our future, our future community rating score. The master plan will result in more comprehensive and cohesive stormwater project planning success. And we're doing this also because it supports the city council priority. The draft model's been updated and that update's been completed and it's being reviewed by staff. And there's $2.8 million of unfunded projects in our, in our plan to anticipating projects that will be recommended in this plan. Okay, next is the South Oldsmar Infrastructure Replacement, which used to be called the Country Club Project, our Country Club Water Main Project, or you may have seen it as the Asbestos Cement Pipe Project. This will replace all the water mains on Country Club Drive and parts of Dunkirk, Patty Drive, and National Orange Avenue. It will install new sidewalks and curbs, repave the roads, and improve stormwater catch basins. The reason we're doing this is that the aging infrastructure is causing water loss and costly repairs and for better mobility for all users. Current status is the scope of work is, was negotiated and awarded in March 2024. Survey work has been completed. We're beginning the preliminary engineering report. This project's been funded through Penny for Pinellas at $1.08 million, Water and Sewer Operating Fund at $1.89 million, and the Stormwater Fund at $830,000. Next project is Douglas Road. So this, the project was to replace existing ditches with concrete pipes and widen the roadway to, by adding a continuous turn lane and add 10-foot shared use path. The goal of the project is to improve safety and efficiency for all users. The funding, there's $3.5 million of state grants and we have $6 million or more of unidentified funding. The current status is that we, the design was completed and advertised for bid in January of 2024. We only received one single bid at $11.75 million, which we rejected in February. So our next steps are, we are planning to apply for the ESP, which is the Employment Site Program, funding through Pinellas County Economic Development and to fill the funding gap and then we would re-advertise the project. If the city's unable to require funding through the program, then we'll consider our next steps, which likely be a scope reduction of the project. Next is Cindy Nino, or Finance.
We have a question, Dan.
Okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Nappens has a question.
When, what might we know about ESP funding for Douglas Road?
The application is due in August, end of the year.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, council. Cindy Nino, Administrative Services Director. And now that we have a good overview of the CIP process and the current projects, we'll go ahead and dive right into the details of the 2025 through 2030 CIP. You ready?
Yes.
Ready as we'll ever be. Get this party started. Okay, the funding sources for the current, the current CIP document include general fund revenues, public safety impact fees, CRA tax increment financing revenue, local option fuel taxes or LOFT, Penny for Pinellas, grant funding, both state and federal, water sewer charges for services, some water sewer impact fees, stormwater utility fees. And then we have one project that we have included in the CIP but listed as contingent upon grant funding and that will be a piece of the Douglas Road project, which we'll discuss later. Okay, and to go over the projects, we thought it was important to show that, display these projects through various lenses. The funding source would be the first one. It's an important one. To fund it by, or to display it by strategic goals, the council's strategic goals. We felt that was important as well, as well as the council priorities. So we'll go ahead and get started with that. The summary of the funding sources. General fund revenues, we have, let's see, my glasses. $894,000 for fiscal year '25. The total is $6.166 million for the total of six years. Public safety impact fees in the impact fund, we have $178,750 for fiscal year '25. For the total of six years, we have $1.6 million. For the CRA TIF revenues, the CRA fund, we have a total of $300,000 planned for fiscal year '25 with $3.7 million for the six years. Local option fuel taxes, that's a steady revenue stream that comes from taxes you pay to the fuel pump, $185,000 per year with a total for the six years of $1.1 million. Penny for Pinellas, $950,000 planned for fiscal year '25 with a total of $6.57 million for the six years. State of Florida grant, we have appropriation for the Douglas Road project scheduled for 2026 for $3.5 million. And then, of course, the total for the six years, $3.5 million. Water Sewer and Operating Fund revenue, we have just over $2 million planned for fiscal year '25. For the five year, for the six years, we have almost $15 million of water sewer funded projects. American Rescue Plan Act, we have $3.3 million planned for fiscal year '25. This will be to cover two projects that we will be asking council approval to move forward to fiscal year '24 in the June budget revision. And that is so we can meet the funding deadlines and the spending deadlines for the ARPA funds. So more of, we'll get into that a little bit more when we get down the road. Water Sewer Impact Fees, we have one project that we will be using to expand the capacity. That is scheduled for 2027. A total for the six years, $300,000. A state-afforded grant funding in the Stormwater Fund, $750,000 scheduled for 2026. The federal grant, also in the, in the Stormwater Fund, $1.6 million. Stormwater utility revenue will be covering $563,000 of projects in 2025 with a total of $2.353 million for the six years. We have, as I mentioned before, we have one unfunded project that we are presenting here and that is a piece of the Douglas Road project for the stormwater improvements. Total $6 million. Okay, the second lens that we are going to discuss would be the council's strategic goals. First one is economic development, quality of place, which includes infrastructure, transportation, parks and recreation, environmental resiliency, effective community engagement, fiscal responsibility, effective government, or efficient government operations, public safety, which includes law enforcement and fire, emergency operations, and cybersecurity. Okay, broken down with the totals, economic development for 2025, we have $300,000. The total for the six years, $12.7 million. Efficient governmental operations, $362,000 for 2025 and then $1.339 million for the six years. Environmental resiliency, $400,000 for 2025 and then just over $3 million for the six years. Public safety, $268,750 for 2025, $3.9 million for the six years. And then finally, quality of place, $7.1 million for 2025 with a six-year total of almost $31 million. Grand total for 2025 is $8,430,750. Total for the six years, $51,000, let's see, $51,985,750. Big numbers, all right. Okay, the third lens would be by council priority. The council priorities are maintain existing infrastructure, including the water reclamation facility, the South Oldsmar Infrastructure, also known as Country Club Drive, and the Douglas Road project. The second is to expand community engagement and establish downtown corridor, enhance roadway safety for all modalities, execute the Oldsmar Sports Complex improvements, and determine future infrastructure needs through master planning. The project summary is by council priorities. Enhance roadway safety for all modalities. 2025, we have $85,000. The six-year total is $3.5 million. Establish the downtown corridor, we have $300,000 for 2025, $700,000 for the six years. Execute the Oldsmar Sports Complex improvements, $880,000 for 2025, $2.2 million for the six years. Expand community engagement, $125,000 for fiscal year '25, $660,000 for the six years. Maintain existing infrastructure, $7,40,000, $40,750 for the fiscal year '25 and then the six years, just under $45 million. Grand total, $8,430,750 for fiscal year '25 and then for the six years, $51,985,750. Okay, so now, now that we have a good overview of the summary of the financing in the projects, we'll go ahead and roll into the general fund projects. The general fund projects are supported by the following revenues. Ad valorem taxes, utility taxes, communication services taxes, local business tax receipts, franchise fees, state shared revenues, charges for services, program fees from the fine recreation programs that Chip Potts provides, fines and forfeitures, investment earnings, and then we have some other miscellaneous revenues that play into that. Okay, in the general fund, you'll see that these projects are presented just covering, being covered by general fund revenues. And that's because any of the major projects that have complex funding or special funding needs or restrictions, those are all put into the capital projects funds for the governmental fund projects. So it's extremely rare to see any other kind of funding sources listed for a general fund projects because they go in capital projects. Okay. Okay, all right, so for the general fund for fiscal year 2025, we have $894,000. And then for the six-year total, $6.166 million. Okay, with that, I will turn it over to our Planning and Redevelopment Director, Tatiana Childress.
Thank you, Cindy. Tatiana Childress, City of Oldsmar Planning and Redevelopment Director. So in the Planning and Redevelopment Department, we only have one item, which is the code enforcement truck. This item is scheduled for the fiscal year 2027 and is estimated at $48,000. Thank you.
That was easy. Where's the button? Where's the button?
And next we have Public Works Director, Daniel Simpson.
Okay, so first it's Technical Services. This, we have one vehicle in 2026. This truck is used by our construction management staff to monitor projects. Moving to the Streets Division. We're going to highlight a few of the things. We're not going to go through everything. If you have any questions about anything, you can stop and ask. But the work truck first, we have a new work truck program for fiscal year '25. This is a one-ton regular cab crew, crew cab work truck, which is, will be used by the lead maintenance operator to monitor and move about, have his own truck to, that's fully equipped to do independent work.
Page 15.
14, 15.
14 to 15.
Sorry, we're gonna, we elected to jump around a little bit.
Is that what it is? Okay.
In order to try to not have us jumping up and down constantly.
So maybe going with the summary page might be easier to follow than flipping back and forth and back and forth. Okay. Which I love the summary page, by the way.
Thank you.
I don't think you had anything to do with preparing. The summary page makes it really easy to see which pickup trucks are new or replacements or whatever it is, equipment replacements.
Yeah, next truck, Daniel.
What year it's going to be in.
All right. The next is the three-yard dump truck, which is planned for fiscal year '26. This dump truck is replacing our existing three-yard dump truck, which is used to haul brush, old concrete, fill, and other materials from job sites. The replacement date was extended in fiscal year '21 because of lack of availability and price increases. The current vehicle is a 2009 model. Next is Fleet Maintenance. Again, this will jump a little bit, but I'm going to highlight two trucks that we're purchasing. This first one is a truck replacing a 2008 GMC pickup truck. This was budgeted last year, but we underfunded it and therefore we held off and are buying it this year. So, but this is replaced the Fleet Division and this is used to go get parts at the stores. Next is a work truck. This truck is used by our mechanics to do onsite repairs. So if you have, if one of our tires blows or it breaks down, it's to go to the site and get that truck or vehicle hopefully working enough to get it back to the shop. Next is a Library Director.
Thank you. Susan Hurley, Director of Library Services. So our requests for next year, we have our annual request of $95,000 for the purchase of library materials. And the only major project we have for next And the only major project we have for next year is the replacement of the vinyl flooring in Tico Hall, which is our main meeting room that we use for library programs and for public rentals. It's still the original flooring in the building from the construction, so it'll be 17 years old. So it's vinyl flooring, and it's in need of replacement. Any questions? Thank you. All right, next we have Parks and Recreation.
We're in council, Chip Potts, Department of Parks and Recreation. Okay, in front of you, you have the six-year plan on the parks list. Most of the equipment and items that you see here are going to be replacements that are necessary to maintain the parks and our city grounds. The first one on the list here is the dump truck. It's a 12-yard dump truck, and it was purchased in 2012, and it's used daily to haul materials and items for transport. And it's also used to haul debris during emergency operations. Another piece of equipment that's on the list for us is a, in next fiscal year, is a batwing mower. It's a very large mower, it has an 11-foot mowing deck. So that increases our efficiency. This is in replacement of a tractor that was initially on the replacement schedule that we found that the batwing mower would probably better suit the Parks Department from an efficiency and operation standpoint. We can borrow a tractor from Public Works if we need, so this seemed to be more of a logical ask for funding.
It's not cheap.
No, they're not. We also have another one that's scheduled for replacement in fiscal year 29, so we've kind of made an adjustment in pricing regarding inflation. One of the projects that we have on the schedule for next year is the replacement of fencing at the Mobley Bayou Wilderness Preserve Dog Park. The current fence has shown signs of wear and gaps that have been repaired over time, resulting in a, and this will result in a safer environment for the dogs and the patrons there than with the chase them down.
The gates, the new gates, too.
The gates, skates, fencing, yes, the whole, you know, the whole project for sure. The next fund that we'll be talking about is Parks and Recreation Fund. Not many projects on this list, I can go back, sorry, there. Not many projects on this list, on the schedule. One of them that is coming up, however, in fiscal year 26 will be the replacement of the gym floor. This gym floor was installed in 2005, and over the time, it has shown wear and dead spots. So the replacement of this floor will enhance the user experience for our recreational activities.
The pickleball players will appreciate that.
And basketball, and you know, our cardio drumming, and just overall in general.
Can you give us a quick update on the HVAC Band-Aid situation?
Sure, so our facility supervisor, Wizard Steve Coppola, recently replaced a number of items on the units for the gymnasium. So we have an outdoor air unit and an indoor air unit. He replaced two compressors, a motor, refilled it with Freon. So we're really, 12 weeks, we gotta make it through summer. Summer camp starts tomorrow, so we can make it through. We did have notice today that the, go figure, summer camp starts tomorrow. We did hear from Train today that they're ready to install the unit, but we have to shut the building down for a period of time, and that's not going to happen. Sorry.
They're coming to your house, Chip.
Can you do it in 12 hours?
Right, exactly. So we will constantly monitor the gymnasium unit over the course of the summer and make adjustments as needed.
Fingers crossed.
Yep. That's what we said. Okay, moving on to the Oldsmar Sports Complex. Okay. All right. Let's see, here we have the six-year plan in front of you for the Oldsmar Sports Complex, and there are only a few items on this schedule for next year as well. One of them being the replacement of the exterior doors and frames on the concession building for the soccer and football building. The current doors show signs of wear and rust, and some are bent and damaged and have been, had to been repaired and frequently. Let's just say that, they've had to be repaired frequently. Replacing these doors will increase the security and the functionality. Another project for next fiscal year is the purchase of a reel mower. This one is a replacement of the current reel mower that was purchased in 2016. This machine is used on a daily basis to maintain our athletic turf. So this is the one that's actually mowing the fields themselves, the Bermuda grass. One project that is a couple of years out in fiscal year 2029 on the request schedule is the re-sod of the football and the soccer fields.
How current is that picture?
That...
Is that a real, is that a current?
It's from Google Earth or Google Maps, so I'm not exactly sure what year that's from, but it appears to be from the fall, just looking at the angle of the shadows on the trees right there. It seems to be like a fall/winter picture. So I'm guessing that was sometime in September or October, and that's our transitional period of time, when the grass is getting dry because the rain season stopped. But then you don't have any rye grass that has been established yet, so that's what keeps us, you know, green throughout the winter time. So certainly in April, May, and then also September, October is when it's kind of looking the most rough. But anyway, you know, the number of participants in our sports programs have increased, and that's on a daily basis. Seven days a week, we have activities taking place out there. That increases the stress on the playing surface, and most of that wear happens down the middle of a field. This project addresses the need to replace the sod from time to time to maintain a safe and quality surface. You know, what I try to explain to people is it seems like it's a lot of money for sod, but you could have, you have the nicest, the best scoreboards, the nicest fences, the best doors and building, but if you don't have the turf or the surface to play on, it just, it doesn't support the facility itself. So this, our Oldsmar Sports Complex staff is consistently trying to keep up. I always make the joke with them, Parks makes it green, Recreation makes it brown, so we try to have that balance out there, you know? So they've been doing a good job to try to keep up with it, but this will address that center portion most likely.
It's gotta be less expensive to top dress and spot treat and keep it going than to start from zero by letting it go completely to dirt.
Yes, yeah, and that's what we're doing right now, is we continually maintain throughout the course of the year. And we've just done some, recently we've done some reseeding and command, which is like a top dressing with organic material in it. If you've been out at the complex, you may have smelled it at times. So, but that's the organic... It's the organic nutrients that help.
It hurts to fall on dirt, like if you're playing football or soccer.
Yeah, and so, so this is what this project will address in fiscal year 2029. Okay, moving on to facility maintenance. Here's the six-year schedule for our facility maintenance group. Again, not many projects next year or in the year after that. So I did want to highlight a couple of projects that are going to be coming up. The first one would be the replacement of the garage doors at the Municipal Services Center in fiscal year 28. The projected cost for that would be $200,000, and these will replace, as I mentioned, the garage doors that were installed in 2007. Another project, it seems like we continually talk about air conditioning units, but typically an air conditioning unit is, has a 10- to 12-year lifespan. So these two projects, one in fiscal year 28 and one in fiscal year 30, will address the HVAC units at the Municipal Services Center as well as the ones that are here in the council building. The current units were installed in 2018, and as I mentioned, they typically have a 10- to 12-year lifespan. Okay.
What was the, I noticed in the, there was a note on the MSC backlot fencing. There was a note about having, like, key card security access per the safety committee, and you have no idea what I'm talking about?
I do not have, I'm not quite sure, I don't know that answer.
Yeah, it was, there was a picture on the exact page, of course. It's on 92, yeah. Replace fence around MSC backlot with an automated gate from Hayes Road with badge access as discussed by safety committee. I was just curious.
So right now, the back lot remains open throughout the day, and we've had people come in and try to dump some stuff in the backyard.
Couches, mattresses, garbage.
Debris, you know, limbs, branches, things like that. And from a safety standpoint, once you get into that backyard, you can actually get into the backyard of the municipal services. So yes, I understand what you're asking about right there, yes.
Now that makes sense. I know where you're talking about from Hayes. You used to, we used to see that debris, too, I think.
It was like screen.
Yeah, there was a screen now, yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Okay, next up would be public communications.
Okay, so out of the public communications, general fund department comes the public art. So there's $30,000 that is every other year that's dedicated to public art. We don't know what this is yet, until the public art master plan is done. They're diligently working, but it's just a placeholder to do something as a result of that plan. And then, so, you know, just what I said, $30,000, it's every other year. It's a continuing funding source. Administrative Services.
Thank you, Felicia. Okay, the administrative services, capital improvement plan basically reflects the city's continued investment into the IT infrastructure with the goal of providing reliable, secure, as much as possible, and efficient network operations for the, to support the city services. The AV system improvements are also reflected in the IT CIP. They're pretty much consistent amounts budgeted each year because, you know, technology changes, we're never sure exactly what we're going to have to replace or, you know, what kind of new technology we need to implement. The AV system, we pretty much evaluate it every year and then select different components to replace. Last year, we did the cameras, we did previous year, we did audio and then video systems, so. But we like to keep money in there just so we can address the needs as they arise. The total for the six years is $912,000. Okay, so now we will, that concludes the general fund. We will roll into the public safety impact fund. This fund is used to accumulate resources needed to pay for fire capital. The fund, let's see, is funded by a general fund transfer equal to 1/10 of 1 mil of the Avalorm taxes each year. It's important to note that we did suspend this for fiscal year 24 to help fund other city operations, but generally that happens every year. Public safety impact fees also contribute to the fund, although, you know, it's, that's contingent upon development. And then investment earnings also, you know, help fund the fire capital. Okay, for fire capital, Jason, the fire chief, will go into the details of the projects. For fiscal year 2025, we have $178,750 planned for the public safety impact fund with a six-year total of $1.653 million. Okay, as Jason mentioned, as we, well, Jason will get into, we are currently waiting to delivery of a fire aerial truck, and that also will be paid for out of these funds. So with that, Jason Schwab, the fire chief, will review the current projects, or the projects in this fund.
Good evening. Jason Schwab, the fire chief. So yeah, the first project we have here is the replacement of our breathing air system. So there's $68,750 budgeted. This will replace the high-pressure air compressor that creates the clean air, and then that fills into the air bottles you see pictured there. And then we have another fill station in another room that actually transfers air from that bottle into our air packs and Rapid Diver bottles, so. And then the other two projects we have are just some station improvements. So $45,000, replace tile floors, and $65,000, replace some cabinetry. These projects are actually the second phase of some projects that we've started this year. You guys will hear about part of that next council meeting, there's an agenda item for that.
Does it have to do with the bathroom again?
No, cabinetry. So all of this is original to the building, building was built in 2030, so it's just, you know, time to replace that from wear and tear. And then, as Cindy mentioned, we are waiting on our fire aerial quint. I'm happy to report that they've started production this month on it.
All right.
So we did receive some pictures of the cabin chassis being built. The expected delivery time is sometime in the fall, around November this year. Will take a couple of months to get all of our equipment mounted on it, do some training with the vehicle, and plan to put it in service, hopefully sometime in first quarter of next year, so. We're excited that it's, you know, finally coming. You guys know the PO was cut in December of 2022, so we've been waiting about a year and a half.
Do we get to push it in again?
Yes.
Because that was awesome.
Yes, so we will, yeah, we will have a housing ceremony, so. What you see pictured there is just artwork rendition of what it's going to look like. It's similar, but not exactly, but just to give you an idea.
You should get some cool, like, mean graphics on it, you know, like the 54 and...
We could change it up. So the 54 is backlit, I mean, that's kind of cool.
It's cool.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, the Community Redevelopment Agency, the CRA. This fund is funded by several, a few revenue sources. The city's Avalorm TIF revenues, so one of the primary sources. And this is the Avalorm proceeds that are generated by, you know, for the properties, by the properties within the geographical boundary of the CRA. The county also contributes, makes a contribution of their, the general fund county millage to the CRA as well. And then multi-modal impact fees are collected on properties on new development within the CRA. All of these revenue sources have to be used within the CRA, and they cannot be used to fund any other city operations, basically. Investment earnings on the money that's held in the CRA, they also contribute to the, also contributes to the operations. Tatiana will review the specific projects, but I'll just go over the funding. For the CRA total for fiscal year 25, we have $300,000 planned, total of $3.7 million for the CRA for the six years. Okay, and I will turn it back over to Tatiana to discuss the CRA projects.
So we have several projects within the CRA boundary area, and the first one is the CRA master plan. It is scheduled for the fiscal year 2025 and is estimated at about $200,000. This project is contingent upon extension of the Community Redevelopment Agency. It supports the strategic goal of economic development and aligns with the council priority to establish downtown corridor. The CRA plan will be required if the CRA gets extended, and the plan will help building the downtown corridor within the CRA area. Next, we have downtown mobility study. So this project is scheduled for fiscal year 2026 and is estimated at about 1 million. It supports the strategic goal of quality of place and aligns with council priority to enhance the roadway safety for all modalities. So this study is expected to identify a specific transportation project within the Oldsmar downtown area to support the Safety Streets, Safe Street Penal Section Plan and provide the project priority list for the future grant funding through the SS4 Safe Streets for All program. This project will improve infrastructure within the community redevelopment area and enhance roadway safety for all users. And this map here indicates the traffic signals within the study area. The next project is Safe Routes to School, which is also aligns with the council priority to enhance roadway safety for all users. This project is scheduled for fiscal year 2027 and 2028 and is estimated at approximately $2 million. The council, the, this project is, will improve infrastructure within the community redevelopment area, including sidewalk upgrades, intersection improvements, ADA compliance, to enhance overall safety to support Florida's Safe Routes to School program. And we have two alignments here. One is their approximate alignments, one is along Buckingham, and the other one is along Dartmouth. Thank you, Daniel. And this will connect Oldsmar Owl, I'm sorry, Oldsmar Elementary School to the library. This will enhance, this project will enhance roadway safety for all users, including children, by making it safer for all children to walk and bike within the downtown area. And next, we have Capital Improvement Fund, thank you.
Okay, the Capital Improvement Fund is where we keep track and accumulate resources needed to pay for the city's more significant, larger governmental fund capital projects. Generally, this fund is funded by local option fuel taxes. Local government... Local government infrastructure SRTAX, better known as Penny for Pinellas grants, both federal and state, are common in this fund, as well as investment earnings. Penny for Pinellas is by far one of our most important and significant funding sources. We get about $2 million a year, which we'll, you know, get into detail in the operating budget workshop. But it's, we were just talking today, it's like, we're not sure what we would do if we didn't have that important funding source. Okay, over the six years, we have a total of $6.57 million planned for program for penny money. And then with $950,000 planned for next fiscal year. For the local option fuel taxes, we're going to be using that for the citywide street resurfacing program, as we do every year. That program is also supplemented by the city, or the Penny for Pinellas, because we don't have enough money for that. The Penny for Pinellas also pays for OSC improvements and then sidewalk and curb replacements. Other very important projects are typically funded here, including the South Oldsmar infrastructure replacement, the street portion of that project. Douglas Road is by far the biggest project we have scheduled for penny money with $2.5 million in fiscal year '26. And then, kind of as we mentioned earlier, there's part of that Douglas project, there's about $6 million unfunded in the stormwater fund. We're going to be receiving about $3.5 million in grant funding in 2026. For the entire fund, all revenue sources for fiscal year 2025, we have $1.135 million. And then for the six years, we have just over $11 million. Okay, and I will turn it over to Parks and Rec Director Chip Potts to discuss the Parks and Rec projects.
Good evening again. One of the exciting penny projects that we have on the schedule is the relamping of the Oldsmar Sports Complex athletic field lighting. This would be a three-phase project, one in fiscal year '25, one in fiscal year '26, and one in fiscal year '27. And what this will do is this will replace the metal halide light fixtures that are out there now with energy-efficient LED lighting. And what that'll do is it'll provide for more consistent lighting, it'll reduce our maintenance costs, and it will be more energy efficient. The lighting that we have out there now was installed between 1998 and 2003. It's out of warranty and we have, it does cost us annually to maintain that and to replace bulbs, so.
Get our money's worth out of those.
Yeah, so.
Twenty-three years old.
Yes, sir.
I was playing under those lights.
So old, stop.
Lighting in the parking lot by the, by the Bolt's Rink and the soccer field, is that, is that going to be included in this?
That is not part of the athletic field lighting project, but we can, I know the facility maintenance group is working their way around the city. They've done some of our parking lots, relamping them with LEDs, so if they haven't gotten there yet, then it should be coming soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, another project that we have on the schedule, this one's for 2026, are sunshades for the BMX hills. You know, you guys know it's hot out there. You've been to the top of the hill. There is no shade at the top of the hill. And as you have seen or experienced yourself, those riders are, you know, not only are they fully exposed to the sun, but they have to wear long sleeves, long pants, and helmets. And it also, you know, puts our staff out there in the, in the sun throughout the day. And, you know, we ride in the day and into the evening. So what this will do is it'll provide sun protection for the staff. It'll provide heat safety and comfort for both them and the riders. And, you know, hopefully that'll help us to attract more riders year-round as, you know, so they don't, you know, pass out in the...
How much are those little fans that spray the water mist? You know what I'm talking about?
We could have used those for Memorial Day as well.
Right.
Well, we were up there for Leadership Pinellas and it was so hot at the top of the hill.
It is. It is.
April, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's, and it's even when you're, when you have a national or a state race in February and it's 80, 84 degrees, it's hot.
So is if there's a storm, you'll take them down?
If there's a hurricane, hurricane, we would probably take them down. These, not on a daily thunderstorm basis, though.
Just, yeah, hurricane.
Mm-hmm.
And we take down the bleacher ones during hurricanes, too, yeah.
It's an endeavor. Takes all day. Well, not to take it down, but to put them back up for sure. Okay.
All right. Next, we have our sidewalk and curb replacement project. We budget $85,000 each fiscal year for this. The, we, the plan is to bring up sidewalks into ADA compliance and to fix trip hazards.
Stop.
Yes.
I noticed that in the plan for the sidewalk replacement projects, I noticed that Guller wasn't included.
Well, we haven't listed our priority list in the presentation because sidewalks are a little harder to see where we're going to be
Okay.
in a year, a year from now. We are working on sidewalks, like, when we bring it to council, we'll have what we're specifically going to do. We are planning to get to Guller in the next three years, though.
Thank you.
All right, next is the citywide street resurfacing project. This is where we plan for $25, $250,000 each fiscal year to merely surface our asphalt roadways. If we don't do this, then these, our streets cost a lot more to repair. So we, we program $250,000 each year. And I have the priority list that we're planning for this coming fiscal year. This is subject to change and it's subject to actual, the actual costs we will incur. So that's what we're planning to do. Washington Avenue, Arlington Avenue, Woodward Avenue, Lake Placid Court, Corkwood Lane, and Edgewood Court.
The Water Sewer Operating Fund is the operating fund for the city's utility operations. Revenues that support this fund include charges for services, which come from your water bills, your water sewer bills. Basically, it's water sales, reclaimed water sales, wastewater sales. There's also other user fees, such as connection fees and sometimes disconnection fees. Grants, federal and state, are common here, investment earnings. And then sometimes we have, we're able to use some water sewer impact fees when they're available and when we have the appropriate project that increases system capacity. Okay, for the fiscal years '25 through 2030, we have about $5.36 million in projects scheduled. Five point three six million for fiscal year '25, and then it's total just over $18.5 million for the six years. Of that, a good part of it is funded by the water sewer revenue that comes in from utility bills. Also, you'll notice there is a contribution from American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. These are the projects I briefly alluded to earlier. We are planning to accelerate these projects and move them forward into fiscal '24 through a council budget revision to be considered in June. And that is so we can meet the ARPA funding deadlines that are coming up quickly. The projects would include meter upgrades. It's a project that's been on the, on the books for a long time, which Daniel will get into. And then also a new vacuum excavator truck. We're going to, planning to accelerate both of those to meet the deadlines. And then if those projects are approved for, to be moved to fiscal year '24, they will come out of the final version of the CIP. Okay, I will turn it back over to Daniel Simpson, which he will be going over the projects for the water sewer fund for the foreseeable future.
Buckle up. First, we have utility maintenance, utilities maintenance. I'll highlight a few of the projects. Our crane trucks, the first one's in fiscal year '26. These trucks are used to pull pumps out of lift stations, so they have a crane. And they also are outfitted with everything needed to work on a lift station. This is programmed for fiscal year '26 as, and it was originally purchased in 2014. Next is our lift station rehabilitation project. This project, we go to a lift station and assess the piping, valves, everything that is at a lift station, and raise the electric panel. We do everything you need to do to replace or repair a lift station. So the city has 26 lift stations, so we do one per year. Sometimes this, the schedule moves around based on needs. All right, next is our distribution and collection division. The first project I'll highlight is the gravity sewer lining. This, we plan to do every year typically, but this next fiscal year, we're planning a larger project and we need to line Lafayette Boulevard water, or sewer main. So that's a main artery into the, into the plant, so it's a, it's a more expensive project. But basically, what we do is, you can see on the right, that's what it looks like when it's done, on the left is before. They put in a plastic cure-in-place pipe that goes in, it's almost like a cast on your arm, but on the inside.
Yeah, I've seen those videos. How long does a cure-in-place piping last? Do you know?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
How long does a cure-in-place pipe, like, last versus, I mean, obviously, completely replacing it would be exponentially expensive, but...
Around 20 years. But they say that it's, the pipe isn't, is better, well, it's obviously better after, but it's as good or better than new pipe.
Nice.
Can you line it again?
It's a good question.
Yeah, like, once it's lined, can you reline it?
It would, you'd have to look at the capacity, because once you start, it'll keep narrowing, you know?
Yeah.
It's like a artery.
I've seen lots of videos of it, though. It's very cool.
So can you let us know in 20 years if we can line them again? What are you asking?
Well, for $2.4 million, if it only buys us five years, we need to rethink the plan.
We've had very good success with this.
This is funny. It's just like, no, we'll just put another one in there. Like, sure, like, I don't know.
Then we need like a balloon catheter to stretch it out.
In 2044, we'll figure that out, I guess, Andrew.
Andrew, would you develop that for us, please?
They did that in Harbor Falls, right, that replacement?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been very successful.
Very successful.
For our, for what we do. Next is a pickup truck replacement. This will be used by our meter reader and it's being replaced with the schedule. The next project I want to highlight is the Forest Lakes Boulevard Relocations. So this is planned for fiscal year '27. This is dependent on the Pinellas County project to widen Forest Lakes Boulevard. It's Phase Three of that project, which is between State Road 580 and Tampa Road. We have existing water mains that will be in the way of their project and also sewer mains. So we will have to relocate some of the pipes. We're working with them directly to try to minimize our relocations. Some of the pipes are old and need to be replaced anyway, so we're using that as a time to get in and fix our pipes. But we're budgeting a million dollars right now for this project and the schedule's dependent on Pinellas County's schedule.
Is any of that cost shared or is it, it's your pipe, move it?
Yeah, it's pretty much our pipe, move it. With that said, there is a, you know...
They are digging it up.
We serve the same people, the county and us. So they, they do make every effort to minimize. The, the problem we have with this project is there's a 36-inch or 48-inch. One of the large St. Pete water mains runs right through the project, so they would probably get, like, if you have to move one pipe, we're going to be the one that has to move.
Yeah.
So, but we're, we're coordinated with them regularly to make sure that our, our stuff's taken care of.
Is the project still unfunded at the county level? Because the last, it was like maybe two years ago that, when they had like a public information meeting about Phase Three, it was like, oh, we're planning it, but still kind of unfunded. Do we know if that's changed?
I don't know that answer for sure. I believe, it seems pretty funded based on...
Or real now?
Yeah, there was like the genuine level of excitement when that was going on. Because like, you know, we've all driven down there. You drive and then it's almost like a bottleneck. You're coming through, past Abenteen and down.
Do you have a timeframe for this? Like, a year?
When, you're saying how long it's going to take?
Start doing this pipe?
The pipe, we plan to, sorry, we plan to do a JPA, which is a joint partnership agreement. And with Pinellas County, so what we will do is we'll pay the contractor, their contractor, to move our pipe and it'll be integrated into the project. And we worked, I discussed it with them, that our work would be alongside their work so that it would be part of the basis of bid, meaning when they open the low, the bid, that it wouldn't just be based on their work, which is what happens with DOT projects. Ours is just like an add-on. It will go, our work will go towards the total that determines the low bid.
And our team gets to be there, too, to make sure they don't screw anything up with our pipe.
Oh, yeah, we'll be very involved. We would be involved even if we weren't moving, because we, protecting our utilities is, why get up in the morning?
Contractor blows through a fiber optic cable or a water main or something.
Yes. Our next, point of emphasis is the vacuum excavator truck. This is a $600,000 truck. It is used by three divisions. The distribution and collection is the main user of it, but also utility maintenance and our stormwater group. This is replacing our existing vac truck. It's used for sanitary sewer overflows, sewer main line cleaning to prevent sanitary sewer overflows. And during large main breaks, they use it to excavate the, and get the water out of the way so they can work on the pipe. Next is our water meter replacement. As Cindy mentioned, we've been kind of working on this slowly for years and we would like to accelerate this. The project is to replace all water and reclaimed water meters that are manual read and touch read meters with radio read type meters. The radio read meters will provide extra connectivity and service, which will decrease meter reading workload and rereads. All right, the next division is our water reclamation division. Okay, first is the process building roof replacement. We have been working with facilities to, excuse me, with facilities to replace roofs in the WRF. And in fiscal year, this is the third, the next roof to be replaced. The buildings are over 30 years old and the roofing systems are beginning to deteriorate and show wear. Next is a trailer-mounted main lift station bypass pump. So this is, this pump is used in an emergency that is large enough to help move water from the main lift station to the headworks. It also can be used, since it's on a trailer, it can be used by, to pump any lift station. And we use it as a redundancy during extreme weather events or catastrophic equipment failure. Next, I will lightly highlight the technology improvements. We're funding 50,000, or we're programming $50,000 for fiscal year '25 for cybersecurity upgrades. And this is a regulatory requirement and it's protecting our critical infrastructure. The next project to highlight is the internal pump station replacement. This project's budgeted for $490,000 in fiscal year '27. And there's, this is four 20 horsepower vertical turbine pumps that move water within the treatment process. It collects water from the backwash, from the filters, and pumps it back to the head of the plant for processing. This pumping's showing signs of wear and corrosion and is approaching its, its useful life. And these pumps are vital to our treatment process. Next project is our re-aeration tank expansion, which is planned for fiscal year '27 for $1.3 million. This will add tankage volume to the existing re-aeration tank. This will provide additional treatment capacity for future growth and treatment during large storm events. And our goal is to rerate the plant in future years to be able to handle more flow and provide greater resilience. Should be noted that all of these projects will be evaluated in our WRF master plan, and the priorities may change based on their recommendations, which we'll present to you. The next division is the Reverse Osmosis Water Treatment Plant. And I will highlight a few of the projects. There's, first is backplugging wells. This is programmed for this fiscal, coming fiscal year, and we will, the, the project is to plug wells 2B and 3B to draw water from a zone of the aquifer closer to the surface of the land, which has less salt. So we're raising the area we're pulling the water from. These two wells have lower water quality, which means we are limiting their usage, which puts strain on our primary production wells. And pulling water from a higher zone of the aquifer should improve our water quality, and the project was a recommendation in our 2023 Water Supply Plan. It should be noted that when we say the water quality's degrading, it's more, that it will cost more money to clean it.
Clean it, right.
Okay, it's, it's saltier, so therefore it puts more, you have to put more pressure to push it through the reverse osmosis process.
And then, of course, all the materials that are used to purify it, and the raw materials, the chemicals, everything increases. I was really glad to see this on there, because it was one of the projects that was recommended on the Water Supply Plan, so it's like a direct result. Finally, we're getting projects based on a plan.
Yes, that's exciting.
And prioritizing them.
All right, the next project is our acidizing of production wells. This also was in our Water Supply Plan. This is a cleaning process of our production wells, and the first year is planned for design and then, and permitting, with three wells planned for the years after. This is, this could be considered routine maintenance of our wells, and will hopefully delay the need to drill any additional wells. In the Reverse Osmosis Division, we also are budgeting cybersecurity funding to protect our critical infrastructure. This next year, we're also budgeting a passenger vehicle to replace our current passenger vehicle. This is used by the Assistant Public Works Director and administrative staff at the RO plant, and to go to meetings and inspections and trainings. All right, next is our Carbon Dioxide System Improvements. This is for fiscal year '26. This will install one carbon dioxide storage tank and one skid panel, improving the reliability and redundancy of the carbon dioxide dosing system. We've had supply chain concerns with CO2 specifically, and a dramatic increase in cost, and we, we are looking at cheaper alternatives, and adding additional storage will help us optimize our usage. Okay, in fiscal year '27, we have blending disinfection improvements. So this is installation of a 2-point-million-gallon-per-day sodium hypochlorite system to treat Pinellas County's water, to match the water quality produced by the Reverse Osmosis Plant. So this is our emergency backup, and we are looking at a chlorine system that we can more seamlessly take their water in an emergency. Currently, we would have to flush the entire system, and then change the chlorine, they use a different type of chlorine. But this would allow the city to have the flexibility to blend its own finished water for distribution during emergency situations. Next is our Degasification System Rehabilitation. This is for fiscal year '28, $120,000. So this is to replace media in the degasification stacks used for off-gassing hydrogen sulfide, which is the rotten egg smell, from the raw water by a biological odor scrubbers and replace the fan impeller. So our water has naturally occurring hydrogen sulfide, which passes through a membrane system, and must be removed in the treatment system for aesthetic and regulatory requirements.
Dan, I got one quick question, and I apologize if, because I don't know the answer, but this carbon dioxide system improvement, do we have one of those buildings now, or no?
We have, we have a carbon dioxide system. It's, it's to, it's redundancy.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and to increase the capacity.
So it's gonna be an add-on, or it's gonna be another one, or is it just...
It's, it's a second one.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yes. All right, in Environmental Management, we have a, a truck planned for 2027. All right, next, Cindy will speak on the financials of the Stormwater Utility Fund.
Thank you, Daniel. The Stormwater Utility Fund is the operating fund of the city's stormwater operations. The fund is supported by charges for services, including residential and commercial stormwater fees, which are collected from the utility bills. Federal and state grants are common in this fund, and the investment earnings also contribute to support the projects and the operations of the fund. Okay, for, we have two major projects in this fund that are scheduled for future years. They were both discussed earlier in the presentation at the beginning, when we talked about the current projects. One of them is the Culver at State Street, also known as the State Street Ditch, that's scheduled for 2026, and we have a, both a federal grant and a state grant. The federal grant is $750,000, I'm sorry, the state Florida grant is $750,000, federal grant is $1.6 million. We also have an unfunded piece of the Douglas Road project, and that, we are hoping to, as Daniel mentioned, hoping to get an ESP grant to cover that unfunded portion. Stormwater revenues support, there, for 2025, we have $563,000 of stormwater revenue-funded projects, and then for the six years, $2.53 million for stormwater revenue-supported projects. Grand total for the fund for 2025 is $563,000, with $10,700,000 for the total of the six years. Okay, with that, I will turn it back over to Daniel Simpson.
Okay, our first thing I want to highlight is the front-end loader. This will replace our 2012 Kawasaki loader. It's a $292,000 piece of equipment. This equipment loads various materials onto dump trucks and trailers, and it's also critical to emergency operations during our first push and search and rescue and sandbag operations. Next is our stormwater pipe rehabilitation. This project's very similar to the one I mentioned in Distribution Collection, except it would be for stormwater pipes. And in fiscal year '25, we are planning to rehab a pipe on Donegal Court. Preventative maintenance on our pipes is necessary to avoid failures, which lead to fail, failures in the right-of-way, which would be roads and flooding. All right, next is our 14-yard dump truck. This is for fiscal year '25, and it's $166,000. This would be replacing our 2008 Sterling Dump Truck with a larger 14-cubic-yard-bed truck. This is the only large dump truck in the city's fleet, and it's critical for pulling equipment and carrying debris in regular and emergency operations. In fiscal year '27, we have the Moxon Creek Bank Stabilization Project, which is budgeted for half a million dollars. This will stabilize the banks of Moxon Creek between Pepper Tree Drive and Oakleaf Boulevard, and using a sustainable solution. I used gabion baskets as the basis for our cost estimate. So erosion causes sediment to be transported downstream, which decreases the capacity of the drainage system, and if it continued, it would, if erosion continues, it will threaten the integrity of structures closest to the creek.
So in the past, you've, you've taken that bucket truck or whatever and cleaned it out. You're gonna clean it out and then put some kind of a wall structure?
This is, what we've done to, this is behind-the-law offices.
Right.
You'll see there's, like, what we call riprap bags. That's how we've normally redone it, but the slope on the sides causes water to move quickly into the stream, and the fact that it's on the curve causes erosion.
Yeah, some of those, those things have cracked and they're gone.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's, it's really doing a, that's, what we've been doing is a Band-Aid. This is the real fix.
Gotcha, thank you.
Next, City Manager.
What you've seen to this point, I, I feel is a very carefully curated plan for very important projects that need to be done in the next fiscal year within the financials constraints that were given. So having said that, you all have seen $52 million in projects. So, so this year, as I, as I said earlier, we took, the, the projects that are not financially feasible or identified with a funding source have been removed in, in an appendix. I just want to take a, a second to, to talk about some of those. So, so that includes about $56 million in projects on a list that have no available financial funding. So just to, just to highlight some of those, that are the bigger, big-ticket items, a theater downtown is one of them, right? So we have, right now, we have about a $5.1 million estimate on that. A new EOC City Hall, you know, could be a replacement of the Municipal Services Complex to a hardened structure. We have about $15.7 million. Resilient-ready projects, we have about $10.4 million of those projects, but that's only the beginning of that. That is, you know, hardening up the shoreline and creating bio swells in the streets in downtown. We have about $3.4 million for Shore Drive Trail. That came out of the, the, really, the, it was, it's been in the capital projects before I was here, and it wa, it's been re-identified because of the conversations that we had about the speed bumps on Shore Drive. There's reclaimed wa, and so some of these are absolutely necessary, the utility projects, reclaimed water storage, additional capacity to, $2 million. We have a, there's a sewer collection system project in there. We've, we've put a placeholder for $5 million. That's converting the existing septic tanks in East Oldsmar to sewer. That's been talked about for many years in the state legislature, so that may be mandated. Water main improvements at $2.3 million. And then, again, as, as Mr. Simpson had talked about earlier, $2.8 million in, in funding not-available projects for, you know, the, the, the water master planning. So I just wanted to, to highlight that there is a long list of unfunded projects. And before I, before I close, do you guys have any questions about those?
Sad.
And Mayor, it, it is the, I believe that, you know, you, you picked infrastructure as one of the main priorities for the city. I, I, this is not happening just to Oldsmar, it's happening everywhere in Florida, was built 50 years ago. Things are aging all at the same time. So that is certainly challenging for local governments. So I want to, I want to thank our, our staff again, our team, they've worked extraordinarily hard to, to put this document together, and it really took, it took everybody to do this. So, so I want to, I want to grab my list again, so I don't forget Garrett again, so...
Start with Garrett.
Good.
Last year, it was John, this year, it was Garrett. So, 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 so again, I, I want to thank Cindy Nino and her team, Garrett Ziliff, Finance Administrator, Amy Ratliff, Accounting Administrator, John Dauphine, Senior Management Analyst, Daniel Simpson, Director of Public Works, John Ajahn, Assistant Director of Public Works, Chief Schwab, Fire Chief, Fire Rescue Chief, Tatiana Childress, Planning and Redevelopment Director, Chip Potts, Parks and Recreation Director, Susan Hurley, Library Director, and Cindy did pass me a note earlier, she said, "Do not forget Jordan Lance," who isn't here tonight, who put together the PowerPoint for us, Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office.
Yeah, I agree, great job.
Felicia.
Amy.
And, oh, did I just miss any? Oh, oh, I did Sabrina nap. Okay, let's, you know, every year, it's gonna be, so, so, so thank you, guys. It really was great.
Can we, can we hear it for City Staff? Thank you, City Staff, great job. Wonderful, fantastic.
So, thank you, and we'll be, this will be, you know, the capital improvement budget for consideration for adoption. So thank you.
All right. Any final questions? Anything?
Just a couple of comments, I, um...
Sure, you want to go first, Councilwoman Gannon?
Thank you, Mayor, I, um, we'll miss that ARPA money, yeah. Wouldn't it be nice if we could get that every year? But I'm glad we have a plan for it. The ESP money would be fantastic, for Douglas Road especially. You know, I, I mentioned it briefly, but it was really nice to see immediate prioritization of items from the Water Supply Plan, and I'm really looking forward to the WRF Master Plan, because it, you know, then we have prioritized products, it's, the budget is less reactionary, there's fewer emergencies, it's more predictable for staff as far as manpower, and, you know, from a cost perspective, getting things done immediately usually means there's some sort of disaster, which means it's going to be more expensive to fix. And it's not, it's not as arbitrary, right? It's not based on a 10-year schedule, or a 12-year replacement schedule, or, you know, the building plan says that, or the, the building book, you know, it says that at 20 years, we replace this thing, you know? It, it gives a little more transparency into, and, you know, political cover to an extent as well, as to where we're spending our money, right? Because then we're not just saying, "Well, you know, I like the library floor, but it could really look better," or, "No, actually, the fire station floor, that, that one looks better." You know, it, it just kind of makes more sense. I loved the summary pages, I, I know I already said that, but seeing the, the out-year funding there, as well as on the individual pages with the pictures, made it visually a little bit more understandable for me, and then, of course, including the, the data next to the item in parentheses as to whether it was a replacement, or new, or related to cybersecurity, very helpful. Thank you so much for that. I appreciate that the unfunded projects are taken out, and I, and I mentioned this at the last council meeting, not taken out, but removed as far as putting them, you know, in the appendix, because I really think it skews our overall numbers in the front, especially in the general fund. Even having the little $6 million placeholder, you know, skews us a little bit in 2026, you know, all of a sudden, we go from $8 million in 2025 to $23 million, so it's like, hmm, hmm, hmm. And so taking those unfunded projects out, I think, gives us a more realistic view of what we're actually spending and anticipating, and I think we're gonna find, just based on the unfunded projects, that the WRF Master Plan is going to require us to pull a lot of those items out of unfunded and put them into the actual budget. I just don't see how we're gonna avoid that, but we have to do it. We absolutely have to do it, and I think, I applaud staff for, for really prioritizing, and you can see it in the numbers, the infrastructure-based projects. Today, we received via email the property use or estimate of changes in taxable values. As I'm sure everyone saw, percentage increase for Oldsmar is only at 4.67%. Not, which is not great, it's actually the, the worst in the county. It's actually the, the worst in the county, right? So some, some of that, you know, there, there's an impact. I learned, actually, this week, the total, what was it, private property or personal, personal property, the decrease of 12.25% of the value in the total personal property, tangible personal property, is the loss of Nielsen, right? And, and the computer equipment, software equipment, whatever they actually had in that building. And I think that, you know, some of this underscores our need to be careful and do our best to support and continue to bring in that business backbone of our tax base and continuously supporting them, because they're paying more than the lion's share of all of this, of not just services, but all of these capital improvements. So, you know, even though our total taxable value increase is low, I think it's important to, to pay attention to that. And then the last thing I want to mention is, you know, the 346 parcels that are in our CRA, and their change in taxable value was 9.91%. So we're like, 4%, 9.91%. Okay, so we are improving our properties and building more in the downtown area. Those are getting older, turning over. Those are increasing the, the value. Okay, that, that's great. Here's the problem, we are absolutely handcuffed by the CRA. We can't spend that money anywhere else but in the CRA. And worse, we have to provide services without that money. So we're providing, you know, fire rescue, we're, you know, there are certain projects that give us a nice overlap, some of the like Safe Streets for All, you know, the St. Pete Drive, you know, we're able to take CRA funds and, and use them for infrastructure projects that help everyone, that beautify everything, and it doesn't feel so stuck right there. But I think, I think it's important to reevaluate perhaps the extension of the CRA, because not having a CRA doesn't mean we can't spend money in that area. It just means we're not handcuffed to spending only that money in only that area. We can still spend money out of the general fund in, you know, the downtown area, wherever we want to prioritize it. But having that, it's just kind of a bummer. I don't think we would be at 4% overall if we could include the CRA in that. So just a couple of general thoughts. I appreciate this. This is a really important meeting, and it used to be a little less transparent and a little more like pet project-based. And I think now it is very, very clear what staff is prioritizing and what we are prioritizing as a council, and it's, it's extremely transparent, and it's not about what would look nice or something that would be nice to have. I think this is a really great document, so thank you all.
All right. Councilmember Knapp, any comments?
Just one, really. I know I've had discussions with the City Manager previously off and on about this, about the future pursuit of electrification of our fleet. I know there are challenges, as we've discussed, of utility vehicles, heavy-duty vehicles are not where the primary focus is with electric vehicles, but I know that that technology's continuing to develop. So the good thing about this plan is we're looking at it every year, so just because there are things in out-years right now that might be slated as your typical pickup truck, those things may be able to change as costs and technology get better. You know, now Amazon's got these big Rivian vans that are all, you don't hear them coming down the street making deliveries at all hours of the night. So as you see like those delivery fleet vehicles start to take over more, from an EV perspective, I think we'll finally start to see it kind of trend into the, the heavier duty range. So that's something I just, in the future, I know not for this year, but in future years that we can hopefully start to make a push towards, but that's all I had, Mayor.
PSTA just got two electric buses this week.
It's happening. It's just, it's in different stages at different types of vehicle class, so.
Yes, Mayor.
Just a thank you to staff. I've said it several times, I'm not a numbers person, so I know that there's numbers there. But just the way that it's explained and how you all take the time to explain it during this event is very helpful. But nothing else for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Graves?
I have to agree with my fellow councilmembers. Everything's pretty much been covered. Great job, guys. Really, really appreciate the time that you put into it.
I just want to say thank you to the City Staff. I really liked the new outlay of the whole design, the way it was put together. I really don't have any other comments, but thank you for all your hard work. I'm very appreciative of what you've done, and I look forward to actually seeing some of these projects get completed, like the water meter, that's been on for, I don't know how long. That's been on for quite a few years.
Very long time.
Yeah. So, yeah, but other than that, thank you so much, and I guess that's it. Anything else for Felicia? All right, we're good. Everybody have a great evening. Meeting adjourned.